Good evening. You'd like to call this meeting to order? Today is Thursday, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Happy Saint Patrick's Day. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Counselor Genatino.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor LaCastro.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join us in the pleasure of the meeting?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If you will stand, remain standing for a moment of silent prayer reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. We have a full house tonight. Everybody must be tired of the weather, so they're decided to come in. Glad to see everyone. Mr. Clerk, public announcements.
Thanks, Mayor. We do have a few announcements this evening. The first is that on this Saturday, March nineteenth, the Owasco Lake Watershed Lake Association, also known as AOWLA, will be presenting its annual Bob Brower Memorial Scientific Symposium. And this will be an online event being held this weekend, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, nine a.m. through noon at, it'll be a Zoom conference. All of the information for this event is loaded front and center on the city's webpage, and you can find the registration link there at the city webpage. Presenters include Dr. John Hathman, who's been the expert for well over the last decade, helping us out with matters pertaining to Owasco Lake. He will be presenting on his current data and research of Owasco Lake, as well as one of the other five presentations will be from the City of Auburn's Seth Jensen, our Director of Municipal Utilities. Seth will be presenting on how we manage the lake level of Owasco Lake. So that is happening this Saturday, and open to the public by Zoom. And the registration information is on our city webpage. Next week, there will be a public meeting. City of Auburn and Grind Line are pleased to announce that the next design concept meeting of the Casey Park Skate Park will be held on Wednesday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, six thirty p.m. at the Equal Rights Heritage Center, twenty-five South Street here in downtown Auburn. And then the next zoning board of appeals meeting for the City of Auburn will be held on Monday, March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. That meeting will be held at seven p.m. here in council chambers at twenty-four South Street. And the only other thing that I wanted to throw in for the announcement this evening, Mayor, is last weekend, we had a really great kickoff to the Harriet Tubman bicentennial here in Auburn with events on Thursday, Tubman Day last week, and then over the weekend. And there will be more to report on that as we go throughout the year. And people will be, Courtney from across the street will be back to present. But I did want to just point out, up on the screen, we have the current rendition of the National Park Service's website homepage, which features a picture that was actually taken a couple of years ago of our Booker T. Washington children when they were participating in the Junior Rangers program out at the Harriet Tubman Home. And that is this week's picture, which is front and center on the National Park Service homepage, mps.gov. But more to come on that as we celebrate the Tubman bicentennial for the rest of the year. So, thanks, Mayor.
And the next day, we had the rally in front of City of Auburn's border, Ukraine. I don't know about Auburn, probably the oldest one here, but it was cold. It was.
A little colder than today, Mayor.
It was really, really cold, but it was a great event, and it was good to see so many people. So, thank you. No ceremonial presentation. Public to be heard.
At this point in time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks of three minutes or less, and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decor.
Thank you. This time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? No one this evening? Very well. We'll have a second public to be heard near the end of the meeting. Approval of meeting minutes, are they?
Yeah, February twenty-fourth.
All right. Approval of meeting minutes from February twenty-fourth this year. We have a sponsor, Counselor Kent, seconded by Counselor Castro. Discussion, corrections, please, please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Dyker, city managers' report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We continue to try to push out coronavirus funding out into the community. The most recent thing we have is our state and local recovery funds for businesses. And tomorrow, Friday, March eighteenth, at one p.m., our City of Auburn webpage will be home to the application for this grant program. It's for the negative economic impact assistance to small businesses within the City of Auburn. Eligible expense categories include grants to mitigate financial hardship, rehabilitation of commercial properties or other improvements, business incubators and startup or expansion assistance, and enhanced support for microbusinesses. The maximum award is forty thousand dollars per applicant. Applications are due April thirtieth. Again, this is an online process, and if potential applicants have questions or need assistance, they should contact Danielle Zabo at the QGA Economic Development Agency. On Wednesday, we had our monthly nuisance abatement committee meeting. At times, it becomes a busy meeting, and we're getting actually some very good attendance at those meetings, both from neighbors of problem properties and owners of said problem properties. I think we've been fortunate. The nuisance abatement committee has not had to take extreme action on anything. Typically, what we're seeing is a trend is that, once a property is before the committee, the property owners are stepping up and dealing with the issues, whether it be with code enforcement or law enforcement, things like that. And we tend not to see repeat issues with those properties once they make it before the committee. This month, though, we did have an issue that is going to move on, and that is related to the smoke shop located at sixty-seven Franklin Street. And that property will move on to a hearing in April, at which point the property owner and business manager will have an opportunity to speak before the committee, as well as anyone in that neighborhood that has an issue with it. And then we will move on from there. Related to this action, Auburn Police Department earlier this week obtained following arrest warrants based on a recent raid of that business for the owner of the business, and separately for the business manager, a pair of matching Class E felony charges related to evading cigarette tax law of over ten thousand dollars each. So that issue is moving forward on several different fronts. Related to sales tax, but not cigarette tax, our New York State Sales Tax Report came back this week showing a twenty-four point five-eight percent increase in sales tax collections in the City of Auburn compared to February of two thousand and twenty-one. And if we look at our average compared to last fiscal year, we're currently tracking at about twenty percent roughly over collections for the two thousand and twenty-one year. I know last week, there was a presentation here about the Auburn Community Solar Project. They will be sending out notifications to our city residents, we think, next week. That's their plan. And again, folks in the community can sign up online for a ten percent monthly electric discount. And they can do that either in the information they get through that mailer that will go out, or at any time, go to auburncommunitiesolar.com and apply. This Monday, we had seven new recruit firefighters start training in-house at our fire department. Five of these positions are funded through the Federal Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant, or the SAFER Grant, as it's commonly called. The cost of the five positions is covered by the grant for three years with no city match. We are doing that recruit academy in-house due to a lack of capacity at the New York State Fire Academy and the need to fill the positions in a timely manner. In addition to training our own seven recruits, we are also taking on six recruits from the City of Oswego, two from the City of Cortland, and one from the Manlyus Fire Department, as they're all in the same boat needing to onboard firefighters. So we have agreements with those agencies to share some instructor staff and to deal with the financial impact of that. Actually, helps us to provide that service more economically even to our own folks. And lastly, next week, March twenty-fourth, at ten a.m., we'll be doing the annual state of the city update. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Report from members of council. Counselor Cuddy, please.
Yes, Mayor. Last night, there was an ADA meeting that I attended, and something that will be coming to staff is a loan that the City of Auburn had given to ADA years ago. We had received our audit review last night, and the recommendation of the auditor was to have ADA look into repaying that. So I know that CETA staff will be reaching out to the city to work on some form of repayment for that. So I just wanted to update the city.
That was one point five million, wasn't it?
I don't think it was that much. I don't think it was that much, but, you know, anything, anything to kind of make us whole, I think, would help.
Any type of that I was gonna jump on.
Yeah, no, no. Off by a couple zeros.
Thank you. Anything else in the council? Resolutions. Council Resolution number twenty-nine of two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment pursuant to the two thousand and twenty-two City of Auburn procurement and surplus policy. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, seconded by Counselor Castro.
Council Resolution twenty-nine of two thousand and twenty-two, whereas on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, the City Council of the city passed Council Resolution number four of two thousand and twenty-two, which adopted a City of Auburn procurement and surplus policy. And whereas the procurement policy requires that the sale of surplus vehicles and equipment with an estimated value of one thousand dollars or more be approved by City Council. And whereas a list of city-owned surplus vehicles, equipment, and other items which have outlived their useful life or are no longer necessary or useful to the city are attached here to an Exhibit A. And whereas it is in the best interest of the city to dispose of the equipment and vehicles set forth in Exhibit A through a direct sale with Milton Cat in order to obtain the best value for them. Now therefore be resolved, the Council of City of Auburn hereby authorizes the sale of the city-owned vehicles and equipment set forth in Exhibit A attached here too in accordance with the two thousand and twenty-two City of Auburn procurement and surplus policy.
Should I bring anything you want to go with your address?
No, we actually have a typo in that thing, and I don't believe we're utilizing anything through Milton Cat. That was just a current admin thing, so that actually, that line can be removed there. But generally speaking, this is what we typically do anytime, typically a couple of times a year, to dispose of excess property.
Counselors, any discussion of questions? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Financial Resolution number thirty of two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing various operating and general budget transfers. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kent, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Financial Resolution thirty of two thousand and twenty-two, whereas the City of Auburn staff is requesting various operating and non-operating budget transfers for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, as outlined in Attachment A. And whereas there is no fund balance being requested for these transfers, now therefore be resolved by the council that, one, the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize the transfers in Attachment A for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, and, two, the resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Discussion, councilors?
I don't have Attachment A.
Mike, would you say it again, sir?
If you slide the resolution.
Oh, you know what? Let me just update.
Do you have a paper copy? Click on the resolution. And break it aside.
Thank you, Counselor Genatino.
You're welcome, Counselor Kent.
Discussion?
Done.
Very well. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Counselors, in regard to this next resolution, members of council have asked that we table this for a few days or a few weeks, but we need to bring it on the floor so we can table it. So, with your permission, Council Resolution number thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-two, adopting the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-six general improvement and recovery plan. Do we have a sponsor?
Sponsor to table?
We have to get it on the floor, Counselors. So, sponsor, then, then, Counselor Genatino, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Now entertain a motion to table this resolution. Counselor Kent, Counselor LaCastro.
I'll set for the motion to table.
Yes.
Motion to table Resolution thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-two. Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Genatino?
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Before I vote, at first blush, there's nothing wrong with the report. It's just kind of large. The council wants a chance to digest it, that fair council. And I vote aye to table.
Table.
Agreement Resolution number thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing an agreement for marketing services for the City's Historic Cultural Sites Commission and New York State Equal Rights Heritage Center funded by the New York State Empire State Development Market New York Grant Program. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genatino, seconded by Counselor Kent.
Agreement Resolution thirty-two of two thousand and twenty-two, whereas on March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the City of Auburn issued a request for proposal seeking marketing firm capable of leading and executing marketing services for the Historic and Cultural Sites Commission and the Equal Rights Heritage Center. And whereas a total of five responses were received from the RFP in a review committee of seven individuals made up of city staff, staff from the Auburn Bid, and members of the City's Historic and Cultural Sites Commission conducted a competitive review of all responses received. And whereas, following the review, the review committee recommended to the city council to retain the services of TGW Studio, two-ten South Avenue, Rochester, New York. Whereas in December, two thousand and twenty-one, the city received notice that it had been awarded a three hundred thousand dollar grant from the New York State Empire State Development's Market New York Grant Program to provide events and marketing services totaling four hundred thousand dollars for the Historic and Cultural Sites Commission and the New York State Equal Rights Heritage Center. And whereas, following a successful execution of the previous Market New York-funded program, the Historic and Cultural Sites Commission would like to continue with the selected firm and retain the services of TGW Studio in an amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council does hereby authorize an agreement for marketing services for the Historic and Cultural Sites Commission and the New York State Equal Rights Heritage Center with TGW Studio of two-ten South Avenue, Rochester, New York, for a period of time commencing immediately and ending no later than December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, to be charged to the designated accountant titled ARPA Projects Market New York, number HA eight-seven-six-zero-four-four-zero HSC. And, two, the mayor is authorized to sign all documents required to execute services for the project.
Thank you. Discussion, councilors? Counselor Genatino?
Thank you, Mayor. TGW has been a good partner with the City of Auburn for the last couple of years. They're doing tremendous work, both with the Historic and Cultural Sites Commission, the Equal Rights Heritage Center, and now ADA as well. I'm fully in support of retaining their services. If you look at the marketing that's going on between, and we'll just use recent examples, Tubman Weekend, this past weekend, Brave Brews the week before. The amount of people who are in the city visiting is unbelievable. I can honestly say it's one of the first times I've been downtown in a long time where I was standing in an establishment, and I didn't know anybody. And it was all people from outside of the city. And I believe that this is a big component of that. So I'm excited that we're able to continue this work with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I can attest that that is a big feat to have not known, to be not know anybody in the establishment, so.
We won't ask them to use the right city. No further discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Appointment Resolution number thirty-three of two thousand and twenty-two, confirming an appointment to the Human Rights Commission. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Genatino.
Appointment Resolution thirty-three of two thousand and twenty-two, whereas the City of Auburn has created the Auburn Human Rights Commission pursuant to the General Municipal Law of the State of New York. And whereas there currently exists a vacancy for one commissioner position, and it is the recommendation of the Human Rights Commission that the following person, who is a resident of the city, shall be appointed as a commissioner for a term of three years, namely Pastor Robert Wilson. And whereas the member shall serve for a term of three years beginning immediately upon approval of the resolution, now therefore be it resolved that the following person is hereby appointed as a member of the Human Rights Commission for a term of three years, Pastor Robert Wilson. And be it further resolved, the set appointment is to become effective immediately upon approval and last through March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Discussion, councilors? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Council Resolution number thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing changes to the city council meeting calendar. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Castro, Counselor Genatino.
Council Resolution thirty-four of two thousand and twenty-two, whereas the rules and procedures of the council require the Auburn City Council meet on the first fourth Thursdays of the month at five p.m. to conduct regular business, and if a month contains a fifth Thursday, there will be no council meeting. And whereas the month of March, two thousand and twenty-two, contains five Thursdays, and the city council will not be holding a meeting on Thursday, March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, the council adopted a budget calendar for the preparation of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Whereas it is necessary for the council to amend the previously adopted budget calendar, which scheduled an initial presentation of the first draft of the city manager's proposed budget for March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas the amended two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three city budget calendar is attached here too, and will move the initial presentation of the city manager's draft budget proposal to Thursday, April seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Now therefore be it resolved, the council approves amending the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three city budget calendar as outlined in the attached list of dates, and that the city clerk is hereby requested to notify the public of the changes that set forth herein.
Discussion, councilors? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor LaCastro.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Counselors, at your, jumping all the way down to other business from the council, at your seats, there are two documents. One is from Deputy Chief Anthony looking for support to an assembly bill with council's permission to ask that. I'm looking at Chief Slaton. I'm sure Chief Slaton's on board with it. Okay. With your permission, I'd like to ask staff prepare a resolution for our next meeting. And the opposition to that. Very well. And then also from New York Conference of Mayors, they are looking for a reso, also regarding name funding. So with council's permission, they ask that staff have this on the agenda for.
I think, Mayor, for the NICOM, time is of the essence. I think they're really looking just for the mayor to sign on to that letter. And so that we can give them that answer in the morning if the council's willing to
Agreeable. Yep.
have the mayor sign on to that letter, which will be a letter from all the mayors in the state. So not enough time for a resolution on that one.
Anything else from council? Counselor?
Just an update on construction at the parking garage.
Sure, Counselor. Actually, next week, we plan on having a full presentation on the construction of the parking garage and the rehabilitation project from the engineering firm, our engineering department, and all of that. Generally speaking, what's going on now is they're moving from one floor to the next. And I am aware, we've moved our city vehicles out of the parking garage to try to free up more spaces due to the nature of the work and the location of the work. There is still parking in the parking garage. It is limited. But we have blocked off certain parts of the parking garage. What we've seen over the course of construction is occasionally, depending on where the work is happening, vehicles parked below the work area in the next level down are being damaged by falling debris. So we try to avoid that, as well as having any pedestrian traffic in those areas. So depending on where work's going on, we end up with more or less parking available in the garage.
Is there any, anything we can do to accommodate the people that can't park?
I'll have to get with our engineering department and find out. I think to some extent, some folks are just shying away from it, just in general, because of it's not as easy as it normally is. So we'll have to look at, look at capacity and see what's happening there and see what our capacities are downtown in some other downtown lots.
Thank you. Thank you.
There is, if I could jump in, Jeff, I don't know if Christina had a chance to update you yet, but there was a meeting today, and I know that the contractor is gonna be working with us to make sure that the lower lot on Exchange Street can be opened on the weekends while they're not doing the construction work above. So that's, that will start as soon as this Friday evening. And it'll be open from Friday evening through late Sunday night, where they'll close it down again on First Things for First Things Monday mornings.
Sounds good. Thanks.
That'll help with the weekend business.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Cuddy, please.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Two things. First is, I was approached by the local group, TNR. They would, they have a presentation. They have basically done the legwork to come up with a plan cooperating with local vets to do a spay-neuter release. And I wanted to ask my colleagues on council if they would be amenable to have them come in and make a presentation on what they've been doing and their plan, and see if the council can help with their, with their efforts. Is it something that?
Yeah.
And so I, if it's okay with the council, I will have the representative from that group work with the city clerk to. group work with the city clerk to set up a time to make the presentation, so.
There are any others?
Great, thank you. And one other thing, I've been, and working along with Mr. Talbot for some programming for tennis in our parks. And what I'm working on is I'm writing a grant to help pay for some of the instruction fees for that. So, I need to reach out to our comptroller so that we could figure out, you know, if the city has granted money, I know the council has to accept that, but the organization, USTA, needs, you know, W-9 forms and other things like that, so I need to reach out to you. Or for, I might have said the bottom form, but just need some information there. But it will help pay for some of the programming that Mr. Talbot and I have arranged for the summer.
Thank you.
That's it?
Anyone else? Very well. Move on to our second public to be heard. Anyone desiring to be heard? Council Hogs, I think we're getting out of here. Do we have requests for executive session?
Why do I have to be the bearer of the vote?
Yes, Mayor, we actually have a few items here. One matter related to collective bargaining, or an update on our collective bargaining, one matter related to the work history of an individual, and two matters made confidential under attorney-client privilege.
So, I will entertain a motion for executive session. Council Genatino, Council Cuddy. Counselors, anyone else? Do you have anything else to add to the agenda? Very well. Call the board.
Motion for the executive session at 5:32 PM. Council Kent?
Yes.
Council Genatino?
Hi.
Council Cuddy?
Yes.
Councilor Castro?
Yes.
And Mayor Quill?
Aye. We in recess for executive session.